Good evening, and welcome to the March 4th, 2020 Legislative Session of the Town Board. I'm going to ask that everyone please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Draw.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
LaFountain.
Present.
Moore.
Here.
Akden.
Here. Okay, before we get started, we do have a public hearing this evening, but I'm going to take a couple of minutes of your time because we have such a distinguished audience tonight. We'll move on to our regular scheduled agenda, and I'll recognize our clerk for our public hearing, please.
To consider adoption of Local Law Number Two, to be known as a local law to authorize establishment of a community choice aggregation energy program in the town of Penfield. The notice was published in the Penfield Post on February 13th, 2020, posted on the town website and town clerk bulletin board. No postcards were mailed due to this being a town-wide action.
Great, thank you very much. I did speak with Mr. Horowitz today, and he indicated that this is properly advertised before the board. So I'd like to take a minute if I could, if you'd bear with me. I know that this particular local law was published in its entirety in the newspaper, but for the record, I just want to capture and hit the highlights of this, so again, if you'd just bear with me. So this is our Local Law Number Two of 2020. This is a local law to authorize establishment of the community choice aggregation energy program in the town of Penfield. And it is the policy of both the town of Penfield and the state of New York to reduce costs and provide cost certainty for the purpose of economic development, to promote deeper penetration of energy efficiency and renewable energy resources such as wind, solar, and wider development of distributed energy resources as well, to examine the retail energy markets and increase participations of the end benefits for eligible consumers in all of those markets. CCA, which allows local governments to determine the default supplier of electricity and natural gas on behalf of eligible consumers. The town will be seeking a combination of lowest costs and highest percentages of renewable energy resources. The purpose of the CCA is to allow participating local governments, including the town of Penfield, to procure energy supply service from eligible customers who will have the opportunity to opt out. So this is an opt-out program of the procurement while maintaining transmission and distribution service from existing distribution utility, which in our case is RG&E. The town is authorized to implement a CCA program pursuant to New York Municipal Home Rule Law and New York State Public Service Commission. This chapter shall be known and may be cited as the Community Choice Aggregation Enabling Law for the town of Penfield. There is a section on definitions as it relates to all of the terminology throughout the document It talks about establishment of a community choice aggregation energy program. A community choice aggregation energy program is hereby authorized to be established in the town whereby the town may implement a CCA program to the full extent permitted by the PSC CCA order as set forth in these sections below. The town may enter into agreements and contracts with other municipalities, non-for-profits, consultants, and other third parties to undertake any of the following, which include development and implementation of the CCA program, act as a CCA administrator, and participating customers including opportunities to participate in local renewable energy projects, shared solar, energy efficiency, microgrids, storage, demand response, energy management, and other innovative reforming and energy vision initiatives as part of the CCA program. The town participation in the CCA program constitutes neither the purchase of a public utility system nor the furnishing of a public service. The town shall not take over any part of the electric or gas transmission system and will not furnish any type of utility service. So essentially with this, we're not getting into the utility business. We're not trying to be the new or next RG&E. There's an eligibility section. All consumers within the town, including residential, non-residential, regardless of their size, shall be eligible to participate in the CCA program. All consumers who are customers of Rochester Gas and Electric Corporation shall be enrolled in an opt-on, on an opt-out basis, except for consumers that are already taking service from an ESCO, have placed a freezer block on their account, and the third for whom inclusion in the CCA program will interfere with a choice the customer has already made to take service pursuant to a special rate. Those consumers may enroll in an opt-in. So those folks that are in an ESCO today, they may elect to opt in down the road. That's a choice that they have. There is an opt-out process, so there is an opt-out letter that is set up, and all customers shall have the option to opt out of the CCA program at any time without penalty. Termination fees shall not be charged to consumers who cancel their CCA service as a result of moving out of the premises that it served. There is a section on customer service, and that participating customers shall have a number to call between 9:00 and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday down the road if they have any concerns. There is data protection requirements, a section that talks about making sure data is protected, and the information of individuals, their residence, and things like that are not transmitted all over the web. And then there's a reporting section that talks about that the CCA administrator shall file an annual report for the town CCA program, reporting on the previous calendar year. There's an effective date, and the effective date this local law shall take effect immediately upon adoption. And then there is the severability section as well that talks about if there's any section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, provision, or phrase in the aforementioned sections as declared by valid judgment of any court of competent jurisdiction to be unconstitutional. So again, this was published in its entirety. Tonight, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear all comments and input as it relates for the town to adopt this and to continue to look forward to moving in a direction of establishing a CCA in Penfield. So with that, I know a number of people have signed up. If you haven't already signed up, you don't have to rush the table. We'll go through the signed-up folks, and then we'll get those that did not sign up that would like to speak on this particular matter. Amy, if you would start, please.
John Steepe.
So it happens when you get here early, John. You know, you get right to the top of the list.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, thank you for considering CCA here in Penfield. I am, in fact, here to support your enabling such legislation. I think it's very valuable for the residents of Penfield to have this availability of a CCA program, and that would be a first step, enabling totally fossil-fuel-free, 100% renewable energy is what I think would be most beneficial for your residents and for the environment. And as a second step, that would allow us to opt into community solar. And as a third step, it would allow us to join with the Rondacoyt, the town and village of Pittsford and Brighton, to move into a Monroe Community Power situation. And that would really, really increase the buying power for the residents of Penfield, and we would probably maximize our savings at that point. So there's a few steps that have to be taken in order to maximize the savings, so don't be fooled by that first step. Okay?
Right.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, John. Thank you very much. I failed to, I failed to mention, and I apologize if I'm putting them a little bit on the spot, but I failed to recognize Bob Canower. Bob Canower is a member of our Energy and Environmental Advisory Team here, our committee, and Bob has been very active with this. Bob's also a member of our planning board. And Bob, thank you for being here, and thank you for all the support. I don't see any other members of our committee. I don't want to miss anybody. But again, Bob, thank you for being here. All right, our next speaker, please, Amy.
Megan Meyer. Good evening. I'm Megan Meyer, and I thank you again for moving forward with this enabling legislation. I care deeply for the environment and leaving the world in a better place for future generations, and this means taking into consideration how our choices impact over the long term rather than the short-term goals. The choice we make for our CCA needs to take into consideration two things: saving money for our residents and choosing 100% renewable carbon-free energy for the health of future generations and all living beings here on earth. Officials in Brighton, Rondacoyt, and Pittsford Town and Village have agreed to work together to line up a 100% renewable electricity supply for over 50,000 customers in their communities. The village of Brockport in Monroe County and the village of Lima in Livingston County are identifying options to access 100% renewable energy for their residents as well. The six towns that banded together to form Hudson Valley Community Power and the town of Geneva, New York have all selected 100% renewable energy at a fixed rate that is lower than the average utility rate for the previous year. With the solar opt-up, these towns have been awarded sustainability grants from their administrator to put towards a project of their choice. The town of Geneva opted to spend their sustainability grant on projects that protect and preserve the quality of their water in Seneca Lake. Hudson Valley Community Power towns earned upwards to $25,000 in sustainability grants to put towards each town's sustainability efforts. The city of Beacon elected to put the money towards local school projects. Marble Town intends to use these funds for local walk and bike projects. And Phillips Town will allocate the money toward a program that will reduce the leakage of greenhouse gases from air conditioners, refrigerators, and other appliances. Municipalities can use these sustainability grants to seek state-matching funds in order to increase the amount of money they can put towards these local projects. So my third choice would be to offer a community solar opt-up, which guarantees an 8% to 10% savings to residents who choose this. In addition, our town may be eligible for further fiscal benefits offered by the CCA administrator to further town sustainability projects with this opt-up choice. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And so just safe to say, you are supportive of us moving forward with the enabling legislation?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to make sure that that is clear. All right. Our next speaker, please.
Katie Rig.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Katie Rig. I live at 23 Dundas Drive in Penfield. My husband and I want to express our sincere appreciation to you all for moving our town forward with community choice aggregation. We are in favor of the enabling legislation.
Thank you.
Additionally, we ask that we use this opportunity to choose an administrator who will supply 100% carbon-free electricity as the default and who can provide community solar opt-up programs in order to maximize savings and support the local economy. Because I'm a mother of two little girls and am deeply concerned about their future, I volunteer for Citizens Climate Lobby. Our organization is working very hard to pass a law at the federal level that would put a price on carbon and return proceeds to every American in equal shares. Scientists and economists agree this is our best first step in combating climate change. I am so proud to say that the Penfield Town Board unanimously endorsed this policy last summer. Thank you. When enacted, there will be financial incentives for individuals to choose more sustainable options, and many will significantly reduce their carbon footprint. But the real power in this policy is that utility companies, in order to continue to profit, will be forced away from fossil fuels: oil, coal, and natural gas. Until the utility companies can go green, however, which will take time, they'll have to raise their prices. Our bill is one of eight carbon pricing bills that have been introduced to this Congress in 2019. A price on carbon pollution in one form or another is coming, and soon. When this happens, communities that have committed to carbon-free electricity options will be insulated from the price hikes of the near future. In Western New York, we have enough carbon-free electricity going onto the grid to cover Penfield's 15,000 residents if we want to commit to it now. In this near future, when carbon is priced as it should be to reflect its terrible environmental costs, there will be a scramble for individuals and communities to buy into green electricity sources, and there will be those who are left behind, who will have to wait for more solar arrays and wind turbines to be built, those that have to get into line and wait their turn to access clean, cheaper electricity. So I ask that we get out ahead of everyone else and lead the way with our neighbors in forming Monroe Community Power. So let's save a little bit of money for residents every month now, and a whole lot more when carbon pollution's price is passed on to consumers. We can do this all, all the while doing what's right for my daughters and for all the children of Penfield by going with 100% carbon-free electricity by default through community choice aggregation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Igor Alovic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Igor Orlovich, and I live at 17 Medlock Drive in Penfield. I've lived here for about 20 years. I'm here today to support this program. I feel it's a very important opportunity to switch the whole town to renewable energy while lowering costs for everybody. And the best part of it is that most people don't have to do anything, which is usually the biggest resistance to change. In this case, it will just happen automatically. People save money. They don't have to worry about it. Don't have to think about it. Our individual actions are important, but the impact of the whole town going green is much bigger, especially if all the neighbors start doing the same thing, as we see with Brighton, Pittsford, and Rondacoyt. But today also Albany passed the same bill.
The same bill or same legislation?
I didn't look.
Okay, got it.
I think the legislation passed.
For CCA, establish a CCA.
Yes, on the town of Albany. So on top of the carbon pricing, also as long as the technology keeps improving at the rate it is right now, cost of solar and wind will keep falling. Cost of fossil fuels will keep going up. So by getting in line, as Katie just mentioned, we're insulating ourselves, but we're also grabbing our spot there. Going back to not requiring people to do anything, I would also strongly urge to structure the system to be renewable by default with an opt-in to solar. On top of price reduction, it also creates local jobs. Community solar means you have to build solar farms, likely in the vicinity. If you look a couple hours, if you think a few years down the road, we have a few farmers here. They'll start retiring. They'll put their property for sale. They have an opportunity to sell it to developers, or they could sell it for the solar farm. And solar farm will probably create a lot less resistance from the public because it doesn't create traffic, it doesn't do anything else, it just lowers your energy cost. So it seems like it's more energy, more local jobs. I don't see a lot of negatives. There will be a few people who don't like it, but in general, it'll probably be a significant improvement for everybody. And then in closing, I hear Energy and Environmental Committee mentioned a lot, but there is no way to follow them. There are no notes, there are no videos. Is it possible to publicize it a little bit more? It seems like there is a lot of interest.
I mean, we have our agendas on the website, but we can make sure that we do a better job of that.
I can't find notes or agendas.
Okay.
Okay. Videos would be ideal. The meetings are at 4:00 on a workday, so it's...
Typically, if you go on our website and you go to online documents, you'll see that on the homepage, and then you'll look where it says agendas, minutes, and resolutions. It'll be right there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Anna Sera Soledi.
Anna?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Anna Sera Soledi, and I'm a sophomore at Penfield High School. I'd first like to thank the town for moving forward with community choice aggregation. We truly appreciate your commitment to listening to the public and their needs and wants. However, I cannot emphasize enough the importance of your use of an administrator who can provide 100% renewable energy as the default for CCA in Penfield. It is an absolute must that we reduce our carbon emissions, which using an administrator who can provide 100% renewable will do. We need to reach carbon neutrality by 2050. The U.N. tells us that we have about 10 years to make the necessary changes to protect my future. Sometimes I wonder what will happen if we fail to meet that requirement. How will I feel? What would happen to me? How would my children feel? Would I be expected to continue onwards, business as usual, knowing that the human race is dying before my eyes? No, failure is not an option. We must change. You can begin to make that change towards a sustainable future now by choosing an administrator for community choice aggregation that can provide 100% renewable energy as a default, and an administrator that can include community solar. To quote Greta Thunberg, "We must focus every inch of our being on climate change," because if we fail to do so, then all of our achievements and progress will have been for nothing, and all that will remain of our political leaders' legacy will be the greatest failure of human history. I know that you don't want to leave that legacy. So please, continue to move forward with community choice aggregation by choosing an administrator that can provide 100% carbon-free electricity as the default, and that can incorporate community solar. The youth are watching you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Gosh.
Hello. My name is Barbara Gosh, and I'm a brand-new homeowner in Penfield.
Welcome.
I'm so new, I haven't had a chance to move into my new home yet.
That is new.
But I was totally thrilled to learn that CCA was on the agenda here, and I came out tonight. So I'd love to thank you for, I'm so happy to hear that you're working towards CCA here, and I'd like to urge you to pass the legislation. And I'd like to urge you to go ahead and move to the option that makes 100% renewable energy the default option. Making renewable energy the default will make it possible for our community to really throw some substantial weight behind shifting the bulk of purchases in our grid towards renewable, and we have to move that way quickly. We can't afford to do baby steps household by household, so doing it town by town is absolutely the way to go. And, you know, it will also create investments within our community to produce clean energy in New York State, and I love that idea, too. We know that many young people today are extremely anxious about climate change. They're well-informed, they read the news, they see what's happening. This isn't something that might happen sometime in the future. We're well into a period of disastrous climate change. I spent the last few months watching dead koala bears on the floors of forests in Australia. It's happening all around the world. And our children are anxious. Will they be able to grow up? What kind of adult life will they face? They are worried about the pickle that the world is in, which has come about because we've been fiddling for the last 200 years, basically since the Industrial Revolution, pretending that carbon goes somewhere else, right? But it's here, it's in our atmosphere, and we are facing the price right now. So we owe it to these young people to do everything that we can. Personally, I cannot look my daughter in the eye unless I'm doing everything I can to present her with a world that can sustain life, which is, you know, that's the choice because it might not happen. So I urge you again to pass the legislation, to go for the full renewable option, and to use this as a chance to really make an environmental investment and statement. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. And welcome to Penfield.
H. Robert Herman.
Welcome, Judge.
Thank you, Tony. As a 51-year-plus resident of the town of Penfield, Joyce and I are going toward the end of life. So our position is for who is going to follow behind us: children, grandchildren, and that's the important factor here. And we both, Joyce and I, both support this proposal and urge the full renewable option, if at all possible. And I don't want to take more time other than to present that we are strong supporters.
Thank you, Judge. Good to see you.
Martin Korn.
I defer to my wife.
Okay. Phyllis Korn.
Don't follow.
Okay.
We'd rather hear from her first, doctor.
It's better.
Welcome, Phyllis.
Thank you. Mr. LaFountain and the Penfield Town Board, I'm Phyllis James Korn. Marty and I live at 71 Hillary Lane in Penfield, our home for more than 50 years. Today is our wedding anniversary.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very nice.
64 years of marriage.
Wow.
God bless you.
And yet, we chose to come to this evening's meeting and postpone our celebration. I've spoken before this board many times, more formally. Tonight, I want to get personal. I'm doing something right now that makes me feel very sad and very uncomfortable. Many of you, maybe most of you, do the same and may feel the same. We heat our Penfield home with natural gas. I cook with gas. The term "natural" is very soothing and incorrect. Note well, there is nothing natural about natural gas. It is blasted from the ground, fracked, by the injection of a stew of chemicals, some proprietary and secret. All damage the environment and the health of those exposed. And make no mistake, natural gas is a carbon fuel. It is not clean fuel. It is not what we wish to see as part of the mix used to generate Penfield's electricity. I said that this is personal. Here's why. Sam, Eliana, David, Dan, Josh, Rebecca, and Miriam, and all our grandchildren's contemporaries are the generation we must not sacrifice to inaction. I'm here tonight because I trust the Penfield Town Board to do what is right. I believe you also want to see Penfield participate in the new ferment of ideas, cost-saving ideas, I might add, about reducing climate change and keeping our town and our planet from the risks of the growing carbon burden. The time to act is now. I want to see Penfield join other Monroe County towns with a mission to make and keep their towns' electricity green. It's critical that we all recognize that clean energy does not include carbon-based fuel. Note well, there is nothing natural about natural gas. It is blasted from the ground, fracked, by the injection of a stew of chemicals, some proprietary and secret. All damage the environment and the health of those exposed. And make no mistake, natural gas is a carbon fuel. It is not clean fuel. It is not what we wish to see as part of the mix used to generate Penfield's electricity. I said that this is personal. Here's why. Sam, Eliana, David, Dan, Josh, Rebecca, and Miriam, and all our grandchildren's contemporaries are the generation we must not sacrifice to inaction. I'm here tonight because I trust the Penfield Town Board to do what is right. I believe you also want to see Penfield participate in the new ferment of ideas, cost-saving ideas, I might add, about reducing climate change and keeping our town and our planet from the risks of the growing carbon burden. The time to act is now. I want to see Penfield join other Monroe County towns with a mission to make and keep their towns' electricity green. It's critical that we all recognize that clean energy does not include carbon-based fuels. I repeat, natural gas is a carbon-based fuel. If we can make concrete steps toward clean and sustainable electric energy, we may also make Penfield eligible for future grants as a green community with a far-sighted town board. Tonight, I wish to ask you and the Town Board of Penfield to commit to seeking a 100% clean, alternative energy source for Penfield's electric power, a source that does not include non-renewable natural gas. Specifically, we ask the Town Board to vote yes on the proposed ordinance to authorize the establishment of a CCA in Penfield. We want the Penfield CCA to offer 100% carbon-free electricity as the default option, which can be provided at a lower cost than residents currently pay RG&E for electricity. And we want the Penfield CCA to offer community solar as an option, which will enable residents to save even more on their electric bills and will benefit the local economy. To all of you, thank you for your continuing commitment to our town.
Thank you, Phyllis. And congratulations again on 64 wonderful years.
Would you like to speak now, Martin?
Hard act to follow, though, Doctor.
A very hard act to follow. I'd much rather go first, because it is a hard act to follow. Mr. LaFountain and my Town Board. I am Martin Korn, residing at 71 Hillary Lane, Penfield, and with Phyllis, have been there for slightly over 50 years. I am here tonight to support adoption of Local Law II of 2020, to create a community choice aggregation for carbon-free generation of electricity for the town of Penfield. Now, put in its simplest terms, none of us are capable of making global change by snapping our fingers and doing what we know is right for the entire planet Earth, which is our home and is in trouble. So we need to concentrate our efforts where we can and where we are able to, hopefully, make a difference, and in conjunction with others similarly inclined, near and far, we can make change happen in the right direction. I think our actions with the fracking issue illustrate that very well. Since we started here, Penfield was a role-model town early on, joined with others, and ultimately, we ended up happily with a statewide ban that may be made permanent. And it's a great example. So specifically, and to be repetitious with my wife, you can tell we live in the same household, I urge the Town Board to vote yes on the proposed ordinance to establish a CCA in Penfield. I further urge the Town Board to require the Penfield CCA to provide only 100% carbon-free electricity as a default option, which can actually be done at a lower cost than currently available from RG&E. And lastly, I urge the Town Board to offer community solar, a specific terminology, as an option which will save even more on electric bills, currently about 8% to 10%, and that's upfront. It's not based on the last year's experience as the basic CCA is. And as well, community solar will enhance and help support the local economy, since one of the administrators is committed to providing the new clean, carbon-free electricity in the local region, which supports the economy, provides jobs, and all that comes with doing that kind of generation. As I previously said, and I quote myself from the last time I spoke here, this is a wonderful win-win opportunity for our town. It is sort of like having your cake and eating it, too. We can do good while saving money. So I ask for your vigorous support for this CCA, a direction already taken by other towns in Monroe County and elsewhere in New York State. Our children and our grandchildren, all of our children and grandchildren, are depending on us to do this, and I thank you very much for your attention and for your continuing action in this direction.
Thank you, Doctor. And again, congratulations.
Donna Spinella.
Happy belated birthday by one day.
Thank you very much. I was at a different town meeting yesterday for my birthday. My name's Donna...
That's where it's at for birthdays and anniversaries in early Penfield Town Hall, so...
Just don't try monetizing it, Tony, okay? My name's Donna Spinella. I live at 39 Scarborough Park. Some of you may know I'm on the town's comprehensive planning committee, the 2020 Plan Committee. I'm here just representing myself tonight, but I can share a little bit of information about some of the things that we have experienced or been concerned about as we're going through working for the 2020 plan. For the first time, sustainability will be a category within the comprehensive plan, and that will cover many, many, many sort of issues and topics. All of us, and I will say, all of us certainly in this room are pretty acutely aware of the existential threat that climate change poses to everything going forward, not just for us, but certainly for future generations. We can all try to take personal responsibility for our own choices, whether it's the power we use or the food we eat and so forth, but we need the help of our leaders, people like you, to help us take collective responsibility for things like power choices. And certainly, this community choice aggregation is a marvelous step in that direction, and I thank you and support this. I certainly think that the 100% renewable option is the only way to go with this, and certainly, I would also support the opt-up for solar for those who choose it as well. I kind of want to bring a little bit of the climate change issue thing home for people here in Penfield. Sometimes, we only think it affects big things that we don't have control over, like the horrible fires in Australia. But on the plan committee, we had farmers come in one night, some of our wonderful local farmers. Who here has had some of the wonderful apples or cider or fried cakes from Schutze? Anybody? Okay, all right. So Evan Schutze, who is the current family member in charge, came in. That land has been in their family for about 100 years. Evan told us that when his grandfather was running the operation, there was really only one catastrophic episode of weather that caused them to lose their crops for the whole season and nearly go out of business. During Evan's father, Marty's, tenure, there were three such episodes, all toward the end of Marty's tenure of running Schutze. Since Evan has been running it for a much shorter time, seven times, has something catastrophic in terms of weather, crazy unpredictable freezes, and then warm-ups and freezes and so forth again. So climate change doesn't just affect something that we watch on TV. It affects us right here in our own neighborhoods, here in Penfield, and the choices that we make as a community, although, as Dr. Korn pointed out, we can't solve everything, let's grab what we can and solve it by making good choices for this particular endeavor, community choice aggregation, and let's move ourselves ever forward in the direction of our town motto, the town of plan of progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Jeff Burns.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Jeff Burns, also from 39 Scarborough Park in Penfield. What a coincidence. I also want to thank you for moving the ball forward on CCA here in Penfield, and I agree with what the others have said. I support community choice aggregation for Penfield, and I feel strongly that our default option for electricity should be 100% carbon-free electricity. I attended a presentation a while back, and one of the things that really struck out, stuck in my mind about it, was that somebody had talked about, you know, that we've been pumping carbon into the atmosphere in great quantities ever since the beginning of the Industrial Revolution. So we're probably looking at like 150 years now. And what really struck me about what this person said was that the atmosphere of the Earth is really quite thin. We think of it being infinite, that it's, that there's plenty of air and it's a large atmosphere, but from space, you can see proportionally what the atmosphere is really like. And what he said was that the atmosphere is really like the finish on a table, that that's all it is. It's so thin that it's just like a finish on a table. That's all that's proportionally what's floating over our great planet. So when you look at it over a period of 150 years, you can see how too much of a good thing like carbon, which is fairly neutral by itself, but when you have too much of anything, it becomes a pollutant, how much of an effect that can have. The average person in the United States emits or produces, in what they do in their daily life, 20 metric tons of carbon a year. In Penfield, we have 36,000 people about, so that's 720,000 tons of carbon that we're all putting into the atmosphere on average. Now, you think about it in terms of the whole United States. There's 19,000 towns, each with people putting out carbon like this, and then there's 195 countries. So you can see, when we have so much carbon, eventually, we're certainly going to be having an effect on that very narrow amount of atmosphere that we've got. So I would just like to say that it's really critical that we take a stand now and be an example for other towns, as other towns have been for us, to go carbon-free. And what a wonderful opportunity, and the time is right now. This is a great time to do it, and we need to do it right now, and we can save money at the same time. So this is also a wonderful thing. By implementing renewable CCA, Penfield will help encourage other towns in the area, and hopefully, there'll be a domino effect, and this can happen all around the country, not just in the Northeast, California, everywhere. As far as community solar, the opportunity there is that that's how we can really guarantee that everybody can have a savings. It would be an optional program. People can opt in to do it, but there would be no upfront cost. There would be a flat discount on what people's electric consumption would be, and there's no minimum term on it. Plus, there would be no penalty for people to leave community solar. So this is a very important option, I think, that we should offer. It's not, you know, not every...there are two administrators. What I understand is one administrator can provide that, the other one, it may take some work before they could, perhaps they could, but it would be very important to us, I think, to have that as an option. So again, I would like to thank you for moving the ball forward here and that you're being an example for all the following towns in the area. We can really make a difference here with the way we go forward from now. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you.
Kate McCardle.
Hello. Hi there. Kate McCardle, 15 Hillside Road. I'm not...I don't have a birthday, I don't have an anniversary, I have nothing to celebrate tonight, so...
Do you have a cold?
What?
Do you have a cold?
I don't have a cold.
Oh, good.
No. No cold, no coronavirus, nothing. I will try to keep it brief and save you for the repetition, but certainly, Jeff and Donna and Katie Rigg and Anna and all of the folks that have been up here earlier, we know that New York State has three administrators through CCA, and of those, what you've heard tonight is an overwhelming, at least while I was sitting there, an overwhelming support to look at community solar and look at administrators that are going to provide 100% renewable energy. Right now, through the Public Service Commission, if you go onto their website, there are three approved administrators. You can go on and find any information that you want about them. There's really one true option there in terms of finding renewable energy. No one said their name tonight. I'm going to say it. Jewel Assets is there. They're going to make sure that we assure renewable energy. One of the things that you've heard a lot tonight is about saving money, and of course, it's a fantastic option for residents to be able to not only do something great for the environment, but also save on their bills and save on that energy cost. And I live, breathe, eat this every day at the New York State Pollution Prevention Institute, and it's so exciting to see so many residents that I have never seen in person, but have communicated with for many, many years to be here and to be advocating for this. So first of all, thank you to the community, but thank you for all of you for taking this as a priority for Penfield. I moved here 11 years ago because of the work that you were doing with solar and renewable energy, and it is critical, when making these decisions, that you move forward and do the right thing in terms of pushing renewable energy 100%. One other thing that you've heard tonight is that three other communities have moved forward, so Pittsford, Brighton, and Aronacoye are moving forward with their contracts. You know that they have passed the local law, which, for the record, I'm in support of the local law, if you need to put that down.
I already did. Thank you.
I think it was clear.
I just took a wild guess.
Yes. I am in support, looking at the timeline and looking at recognizing that you have to go through the process of passing this and then go through choosing an administrator. Looking at the timeline and communicating and conversations with them, they will go to market, so the next step, for many of you that know this issue, is that the next step is to, well, there's probably a couple of steps in between, but eventually, going to market, right? So where you get the cost savings, it is truly bulk buying of energy. So the more folks that go into this process, the cheaper that it will be for the residents. I know that that is something that you're keeping in mind and you want it to be affordable. If we move forward with other communities, it will be cheaper. There's no reason why we shouldn't be working with our neighbors and our partners in this. Looking at what Aronacoye, Brighton, and Pittsford have done, it is not too late to join in on that. Again, you need to do what's best for Penfield, and looking at that and recognizing that the board and the supervisor know what will be best for the residents, but looking at that opportunity to enter the marketplace with partners, and the more that we, the more folks and the more residents that you go, the more bulk buying, you know this, that we have, the cheaper that it's going to be for residents. So considering that, moving forward will be an important piece, and I just want to say thank you again for all of your work on this. I know it's not, you know, it takes a lot of time and is volunteers. I really appreciate that. So I don't think there were any points. I'm going to walk back there and realize I forgot something, but Jeff, the 720,000 tons of carbon, thank you so much. I'll have nightmares about that tonight, so thanks. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kate.
Yep.
Thank you.
Everyone that signed up, I have read the sheet.
Okay, so, all right. Is there anyone that did not sign up that would like to address the board on this particular matter? There are a couple of other times in our agenda to discuss other items, but we're going to talk CCA at this point. So please, if you would, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Sue Steeby. I'm here with my husband, John, tonight, and we live at Four Live Oak Court. We've lived there for 20 years now. I am very impressed with everything that everybody said tonight. It makes me proud to be a Penfield resident. I strongly support the CCA and the 100% clean option for electricity... I strongly support the CCA and the clean, 100% clean option for electricity in Penfield. I think that's a good option in terms of helping the environment, helping all the children and grandchildren coming in the future, and keeping the air clean. So thank you. I appreciate all your work on this.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. As you're making your way, I'll take, this is an opportunity to, I did receive a note this afternoon, an email. This is from Cindy Harrison and Bob Jeffrey, Parkview Drive. We will not be able to make the meeting this evening, so I wanted to take a quick minute to express that my husband and I feel strong about addressing climate change and the devastating effects that it's already causing. Towards that end, we would like 100% renewable energy for Penfield CCA. We must take this serious and make every move towards sustainable living possible. Addressing our energy sources is a prime concern. Thank you again to Cindy and Bob. Yes, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Joyce Herman, and I live at 87 Hillary Lane and have done so for over 50 years. And I want to repeat what Sue just said, because that's what I wanted to stand up and say. How very proud I am to be a Penfield resident and to be in this group of people tonight. You know, in a world where there is rancor and vitriol and self-serving and greed and a lack of really thinking about what is good for the whole, what is good for a whole community, a whole globe, and what is good for the future, to have people with so many thoughtful ideas with facts and presenting it all in a way that comes, when it's emotional, it's from the heart and it's honest emotion. So I thank you all who have spoken, and I am most particularly moved by Anna and want to say that I, we need to apologize to this generation that is facing. I was doing a program in a high school about six weeks ago around the environment, and the students said, "It's great." You know, I was saying, "You, this younger generation is not the future. You're actually leading us and showing us what we need to do." And one of the students said, "And we're mad that it's left to us to do. We're mad that you didn't do it." So, and I think we have many regrets about that, what we didn't do, but we do have an opportunity to move forward now, and so I strongly support this CCA with the solar option and completely renewable energy.
All right. Thank you, Joyce. Thank you. Anyone else? While you're thinking about it, I'll read my second email that came in. This is from Don Novak at Dundas Drive. "I've been looking for a green alternative for our energy consumption and enthusiastically endorse moving forward with the CCA community choice aggregation. This is such a fantastic way for all of us to go green and will allow us to save our planet for our children and hopefully, my future grandchildren. Please pass this, one, allowing the default plan to be 100% renewable energy, and two, allow people to opt up for solar. The more Penfield can do to reduce the carbon footprint, the prouder I become of our township. Go green." Don M. Novak. So thank you, Don. Okay. First-time speakers. Second-time speakers. Yes, Donna. My little printer is working here, and I'm getting another email coming right up here. Welcome.
Thank you. I had that, I just remembered it moment when Kate was saying that she was going to have that.
Did you just have a birthday?
I feel like this is Groundhog's Day. I think we just kind of did this, yeah.
I find after every birthday, I have that next thought that I was going to say.
That senior moment?
Yeah, right, right.
One connection that I had meant to make, and this goes back also to the Comprehensive Planning Committee and what we're doing in terms of the whole sustainability effort, not just sustainability in terms of energy and power, but sustaining aspects of our community that we hold near and dear, for example, our agricultural heritage. And I mentioned to you the plight of farmers like Evan Schutze and other farmers who have this more extreme weather and so forth to deal with. But on the flip side of that, a positive thing in the very near term that we have started to discuss on the committee that we can do for these farmers that ties very much into CCA, is that we're beginning to discuss what can we do in terms of having our agricultural land be used for things, which Igor mentioned, for things like solar or wind or, you know, biofuel or something like that. So we've begun that discussion, so we would like that, of course, to be done responsibly in a way that makes sense for our town with, not just kind of willy-nilly, but with some guidance. But that is a way that we not only improve our energy utilization in terms of its sources, but we also keep some of this, we keep some of these farmers in town who can devote a part of their land to that and can still farm a part or have sort of agri-tainment the way the Wickham Farms do, for example. So we have to give our farmers a lot more options for how to make money in this day and age, and certainly incorporating things like a portion of a solar farm on their land is one way to do that, and it kind of kills two birds with one stone.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on this matter? Okay, the latest email that came in, came in from Mindy McLaren on 5 Mile Line Road. "I'm asking the board to provide 100% renewable sourced, clean, carbon-free electricity as a default option in Penfield's CCA program to replace all fossil fuel-generated electricity consumed by town residents. I'm asking the board to also offer community solar opt-in, second option to be made available with Penfield's CCA program instead of any version of a standard mix option. I'm asking the board to seek, to join Penfield's program with Monroe Community Power, which is made up of surrounding towns of Brighton, Aronacoye, and Pittsford, as well as Village of Pittsford, for even greater group buying power access that would be for five total municipalities." So thank you to Mindy. All right, one last opportunity to address the board on this matter. Okay. Seeing none, I'll declare this public hearing closed. The next steps are typically, we will hold this open for a couple of weeks to give folks an opportunity to weigh in, either for or against, or add any additional information. And then the board will next address it at an upcoming work session, and we'll keep everyone posted when that work session is. Thank you very much for everyone's time. Thank you, everyone, for all of your support on this issue. I'm going to take just a 30-second recess, if we could. We do have a full agenda that we have to continue on. If, everybody is welcome to stay, because I know how stimulating these town board meetings are. However, if there are some folks that would like to leave, now is your opportunity. And I'll give you 30 seconds to move into the rotunda. And again, thank you for being here and thank you for your support.